All right, good evening everyone and thank you for joining us at our regular meeting this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Nathan?
Here.
Russ?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
And me and Joe is absent tonight. First on our agenda is the student highlight, which I know I reiterate every month that it is the highlight of the night. And we do thank you parents for allowing your children to attend with us. And thank you teachers and staff for nominating somebody to take that spot for the month of April. The students who have been or who will be recognized tonight will get a certificate as well as a $15 Jersey Mike's gift card to be used at the Fort Grasset Jersey Mike's, which is right out front of the Walmart. So tonight, we are going to start with Mr. Wood and the high school.
Oh, you stay here. It's about you, not about me. So the high school student of the month is Aiden Dahl. Aiden has been a role model student for his entire high school career and he was nominated by myself and Ms. Burns. He has been involved in a variety of extracurricular activities, including band, cross-country, track and drama. Academically, Aiden has earned our highest academic honor, being recognized as a senior scholar. Furthermore, I was notified by the college board that because of his exceptional SAT score in the 97th percentile, that he has received the National Rural and Small Town Recognition Award.
Oh, nice.
He plans to further his education at the University of Michigan, studying environmental science, I can go, that's right, and pursuing a law degree in graduate school. It gives us great pleasure to introduce Aiden Dahl as the high school student of the month. Congratulations, Aiden.
Next, we have Mr. Yugster and Mrs. Shanks for the middle school.
The middle school selected sixth grade student Connor Sears. And Mrs. Shanks, part of our sixth grade team that nominated him, is going to say a few words about him.
Connor Sears had almost every single one of his sixth grade teachers nominate him today, which was kind of exciting for us. He comes to class every single day displaying our pride, expectations. He's prepared, respectful, kind, dependable and engaged. Connor always has his work finished, which is one of my favorite things, and is always done on time. And he's always willing to help his classmates. He works hard, continually helps others and he is always polite. Great job Connor and keep up the good work.
Next, from Meyer Elementary, we have Mrs. Renowski and Ms. Gordon.
All right, it's with great pleasure that I get to announce Brooklyn Delbeck, a first grader at Meyer, as our student of the month. She is an absolute delight to have as part of my classroom and I cannot say enough positive things about her. She comes to school each and every day with a smile on her face, ready to learn. Brooklyn is kind and extremely self-motivated. She has made giant gains because of her hard work and always giving her 100%. She is a great role model and always leads by example. Brooklyn, we are so proud of you and all of your accomplishments thus far. Continue to put forth this effort and the sky is the limit for you. Thank you for always coming to class prepared, always being respectful and for always being a good friend to others. I am so incredibly honored to be your teacher. Congratulations, Brooklyn.
I do want to mention that Brooklyn's sister Bailey was also a student of the month during the time that we were unable to attend in person. So both girls were students of the month.
Next, from Prostic Elementary, we have Mrs. Moody and Mrs. Dahl.
And up with us, we have Wyatt Kida and Emerson Linky that we're recognizing tonight.
Hi, good to see you all. This is Wyatt Kida and this is Emerson Linky and they are wonderful second graders. They are respectful, they're great listeners and they're smart. But this is not why we're here tonight. We're here tonight because both of them have huge hearts. They are always willing to help anyone that needs it. We're all really nervous. We talked about this today in class. They, both of them, with their willingness to help others, always make our day run really smoothly. They will help anyone with anything. It doesn't matter who it is, boy, girl, football player, student council member, they're there to help. If they can make it smoother, they will. In second grade, this might look like sharing a snack or holding someone's hand as you're walking down the hallway to encourage and promote positive behavior. This might be carrying a computer if someone thinks it's too heavy or jumping up and helping if they lost their spot in the book. These two truly have a servant's heart. They love to help. You two, I hope you continue to live your lives this way, even when it's really hard. Our world needs more of you. Thank you for sharing second grade with me. Congratulations.
On behalf of the board, we would just like to say thank you to parents and congratulations to all the students and congratulations to the parents as well. So thank you very much for sharing your students with us. Next on our agenda, we have a very special staff highlight. Mr. Gilbertson?
Have a good evening. President Gordon, board members, members of the community. It is an honor to be able to stand before the board and the community tonight and speak a few words about a colleague who would probably rather not be acknowledged, but truly deserves recognition. I'm speaking of Ms. Donna Barrier. Ms. Barrier has worked a total of 41 years in public education, both in North Carolina and in Michigan. There were mixed emotions when Ms. Barrier indicated a few weeks ago that she has decided to retire. I was happy that she will be able to be with her family in North Carolina and also assist her daughter, her father, her sons and just happy for her that she's about to transition into retirement. But sad for us, sad for Cross Lake Schools and sad personally for the work that you've done with us. In just five years, I have worked closely with Ms. Barrier and I can confirm the following. Ms. Barrier is a caring person, a true professional, knowledgeable in pedagogy, curriculum and always willing to do whatever it takes to get it right and move Cross Lake Schools forward from good to great. Ms. Barrier works even when she's not scheduled to. So many times in these past five years, I would find her working on vacation, at times when she wasn't feeling well and many times late into the night and on many weekends. In my many years in public education, I've been fortunate to be able to work with so many gifted, talented and truly good, caring people who always do what is in the best interest of students. Well, that's Donna Barrier, putting the best interests of students first. Total dedication to the district, to the staff and to the community. Ms. Barrier, thank you for your 20 years of service here at Cross Lake Schools and for being a truly great professional. You will be missed.
Thank you very much. Well, 41 years seems like a long time, but it goes by in a blink. And if anyone had asked me shortly ago how long I would have left, I would have still said, "I'm not there yet." But things happen in your life and in your families and you have to, you have to do what you have to do. And, you know, my little dad, and I'll leave it at that. So I need to go and do some things for my family and with my family. But when you talk about gratitude, there simply are not enough words to express my gratitude for all the good fortune I've had to get to be here for 20 years and the people I've known and the people that I watch that come in and work and give and do and spend the extra time and the hours and do all the work behind the scenes and on the weekends and when they're sick and don't feel well and because there's something that needs to be done. They do it. And it's not just me. They do it. So I just want to say and repeat that I have had the opportunity to work with a lot of talented and devoted individuals all across this district. And it's been my privilege and my own. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barrier. Next on our, excuse me, next on our agenda is audience comment. Mrs. Loomis, do we have anyone who had submitted an audience comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Move by Nate and support by Mike to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Gilbertson, you're on.
Thank you, President Gordon.
Thank you.
Just a quick update on the Meyer Elementary principal posting did close today. We have solicited input from the Meyer staff on the qualities that they believe would be important in the selection of our next principal. Did that back in March. So this is with Ms. Renowski's announcement retirement, which I'm very much looking forward to celebrating her career in the, hopefully the next meeting and also very, very, similarly, very sad to see her move into retirement but happy for her as well. So this afternoon, with Ms. Renowski's assistance, the interviewing committee was formed. We put together a committee of teachers, parents, administrators, support staff. We met to go over the and review, started the review of the candidates and their qualifications. So by midweek, actually 12 o'clock Wednesday, we anticipate having determined the individuals that we will be interviewing for the Meyer Elementary principal position and anticipate the scheduled date for the interviews to take place on Monday, April 18th. From 3:45 PM and probably deep into the evening, From 3:45 PM and probably deep into the evening, we had quite a few candidates that applied for the position, very high-quality candidates, and very excited about this opportunity, although it's going to be difficult because not only Ms. Barrier's done a great job at Meyer, but Ms. Renowski's done an outstanding job as well. So, shoes are, shoes are big to fill, but we have good people that we are confident that we will be able to fill them with. Also, the middle school principal posting closes this Wednesday. So far, the district has received 18 total applicants. Similar process to at Meyer. The middle school staff has been encouraged to give input on the qualities that they are looking for in the next principal. And then later this week, probably Wednesday or Thursday, I will be organizing the interviewing committee and again, finalizing the dates for the first round of interviews. That should be completed later this week and the dates for the interviews set. So, busy time, a lot happening, and excited about the opportunities to truly bring a new set of great professionals into these roles. Also this week, grades eight through 11 are gearing up for PSAT and SAT assessments. Very important assessment for our schools, for all of our students participating in these tests. Shout out to the tech department, who has prepared the Chromebooks, as I'm told. Grades eight through 11, all those Chromebooks are ready to go for the digital PSAT and SAT state assessments. And the last comment I want to add is, we did put up 105 pages of comments that were from the surveys we put out to all of our community in regards to our proposal for a bond. So that is now on the website for all to review. And you can find that on the district website under the link "Survey Findings Addendum." So, that is there as well. There's a lot there. So, everyone's comments are posted and available for all to see. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is curriculum instruction and the HR Director Report. Mrs. Barrier?
Okay, the only other thing that I'll add, you know, Dan spoke to you about the principal positions. We have also been interviewing for open positions across the district for teachers. Six teachers have retired. One is moving to a position at a community college, and one is relocating to another town and getting married. So, right now, we have been interviewing for ELA and Social Studies at the high school, ELA and Social Studies at the middle school. And we are going to be working on Frostick First and Third Grade very shortly. So, it, I will echo what Dan said, it's busy around here right now.
Thank you. Next is the Chief Financial Officer Report. Mr. Bishop?
Thank you. No report tonight.
Okay, thank you. And next, any district staff reports? Dallas, you all set? Administrators, anybody? Okay. And, Ms. Michaela, you are up for the Student Representative Report.
Good evening, board members and community. I have a few updates to present to you regarding the accomplishments of students this month. Frostick and Meyer have begun their Mileage Programs. This is always a great opportunity for students to stay active and win a lot of fun prizes. This past weekend, students attended prom. The theme of prom this year was Hollywood, and students had a lot of fun. Our juniors will be taking, are tasked with taking the SAT this upcoming Wednesday, and our teachers have been working hard to prep them for this test by incorporating SAT practice into lessons. NHS will be holding a blood drive this month on the 18th. This is a very exciting endeavor, as we have not been able to hold the blood drive for a number of years because of COVID and that kind of thing. Another exciting announcement coming up this month is the debut of Newsies. This will be performed by the theater company here at Crosslek's, and these students have been working extremely hard to put together a great show, and I cannot wait to watch. Performances for Newsies will take place from April 28th through the 30th. Spring is a busy time for our seniors, who will be graduating in just 34 days. Last week, the seniors received their cap-and-gown orders, and we've also been preparing for the senior mock interviews on April 27th. Students have been working on refining their digital portfolios for these interviews, and they've been doing that in their English classes. And finally, our senior scholar athletes will be attending a Bwak Luncheon on April 21st to be recognized. Spring sports are also back in full swing, and many teams had their first games of the season last week. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Nothing under old business. Under new business, number one, presentation of the Santa lac ISD General Fund Operating Budget. Mr. Lang?
Thank you. I should have it in front of you, a three-page handout. And folks in the audience will get you a handout also.
First of all, before I start, I want to congratulate both Karen and Donna. Like Dan said about Donna, I think my wife and myself met you about 25 years ago when you moved to Michigan. Great career and great person. And Karen worked with you very closely. Unfortunately, as a high school assistant principal, we spent a lot of time on the phone together, and we definitely appreciate what you've done and support for the ISD. So, congratulations to both of you. On the handout in front of you, dates back about 15 years ago, the state came out as some dealings at, in one of the inner-city ISDs, that ISDs had to get approval, either approval or disapproval, from local boards for their general fund budget. Now, the ISD consists of three budgets, the general fund, the special education, and the CT fund. The interesting thing is the general fund is the smallest, at least in our case. So what I'm giving you tonight is an overview of all three and just kind of an overview of the ISD in general. But at your next meeting, you'll have to act on a resolution to either approve or disapprove the general fund budget. If you look in the first column, our general fund budget has revenues of about 3.4 million and expenditures slightly under that, for a difference of about 20,000 to the good. It's, we're, the general fund budget, about 85% of the funds there are flow-through funds that go back to local districts. Recently, the 31N money that pays for the social workers, I believe we, you hire your own social workers, so I think, Dan, we wrote you a check this year of about 187,000 to offset the cost of one general ed social worker and one special education social worker. Likewise, we've done that in the other districts. The other big funding there is the GSRP program. Of this 3.4 million, about half of that, a little over 1.7 million, is GSRP funds that comes through our coffers and go out to local districts. And I believe you, right now, have 63 slots of, they can be halftime slots or full-day slots. I believe yours are all full-day students, so you have 63-year-olds, young children in your GSRP programs that they qualify for. The remaining money in that category goes for some professional development and offsets some administrative costs at the ISD. But about 85% of those flow back, and over 2 million of that is the early childhood programs. And that funds has, is, in the 13 years that I've been at the ISD, has grown the most. They pump money into the early-on programs, and we appreciate that. The second budget there I'll just touch base on is the current technical education budget. That kind of speaks for itself. It addresses any of the costs or expenses dealing with staff, as well as programs, equipment, the Career Center building. We offer 10 Career Center programs. Right now, we're a little over 400 students as of count day, excuse me, as of the second semester. And, let me check real quick. You have 108 students attend the Career Center, either AM or P, on the half-day programs. About 27% of our Career Center enrollment are made up of Croweswell students, and we appreciate that. Excuse me, the last budget is the Special Education Budget. It's our largest budget. And, once again, this budget is in the black. And this basically takes care of our special needs students. Some of those services are provided in your local districts. Some may be provided in the homes of the younger children. We have six programs at Maple Valley Elementary School, and we have four programs at the Career Center. Basically, providing services age zero to age 26. And presently, you have 50 students who are getting services through one of our special needs programs. And some of these, a lot of these are shared students. You may have them half-day, we might have them half-day, or some other variations of that. So that's kind of an overview of those programs. If you flip on the second page, you'll just see where I went through, and it'll highlight some of the things that these programs are covered or expenses are covered from. The last thing I want to touch bases on there, over the last several years, we've tried to really emphasize the certification process at the Tech Center. And, most recently, the last two years, we've added the CDL Trucking Certification. Last year, we had 25 of 28 students come out with their certification, a Class A CDL. This year, we've got 39 students enrolled in it, and about half of those students have been successful to this point. The holdback on that is you've got to be 18 before you can do any of the driving stuff. So, we've got some students that won't actually do the driving until they're, until in August, well after they've graduated. So that has been very popular. Welding Certification, we've got eight students going through the welding certification test tonight, another eight tomorrow night, and I think six next Monday night. That's been very successful. Robotics Certification, we'll have eight to 10 students go through that. All of our students in the student, in the Engineering Design Program get about a 20- to 30-hour basic robotic-type training. And then if they want the certification, they come back and do another 20 or 30, and it's part of their Engineering and Design class. And we'll have eight to 10, it looks like we're going to have eight this year. The year before that, seven or eight, and I think we had 10 the first year that we got into that. We do the mechanic certification through the Secretary of State. Like I said, welding certification. We do the CNA, which is big through our health occupations. And we started something this year. If there's any of the night classes that we offer, if a student wants to take those classes and they're a day student, we let them take those free. So we picked up some specialty stuff, especially in the medical field, some medical billing and stuff like that. We figure if the kids want to put their time in outside of school, then we will allow those, take those classes for free. So that's been a big plus. The last thing I have here is just the enrollment figures. Always intriguing to me to look in. Of the 13 years I've been at the ISD, I think this is the first year that as a county, we went up enrollment. Every year, we're losing kids. It's a small amount, it's seven kids, but it's still in the, to the positive. And you see, you were at 1942 on Fourth Friday Count, and, which was up 14 from the year before. So, and Crosslek Schools make up about 34% of the county's enrollment. So that's kind of a little overview. Is there any questions that you might have of the ISD, any of the special ed, CT programs, or anything of that nature? If you ever, if you ever do, feel free to contact us. If you ever want to tour, feel free to stop by. There's one of the administrators, they're always there, they'd be more than happy to do that. So, appreciate your time, and if you ever have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. Next on our agenda is to approve the interim middle school principal contract. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the interim middle school principal contract.
Support.
Moved by Amy and support by Dennis to approve the interim middle school principal contract. Any discussion?
Just to get that right, Katie, this is between us and Ryan Umster, who was the assistant principal.
Correct. Yes. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is to approve the interim district school administrator employee contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the interim school district administrator employee contract.
Moved by Nathan?
Support.
Support by Dennis to approve the interim district school administrator employment contract. Any discussion?
On that last contract, we just approved for an interim middle school principal.
Mm-hmm.
On the contract that's presented now with David Cock, is that how you pronounce the last name?
Koshin.
Koshin?
Yeah.
In the first paragraph, we're doing a contract with him as interim middle school principal as well.
So, he, the intent is that he is going to serve in the capacity of a district administrator, which primarily would be in this building. So, we'll have flexibility with his role, where he could also, if something happened at the elementary level, he could go down to the elementary level. But the intent of the contract is that he would be available for any building, but he, the goal would be, he would be here three days a week in this building.
Three days a week?
Yes, sir.
Is that underneath, because it says, "The normal work week will be five days a week once school year begins."
So, he-
Under the discretion of the superintendent?
Yeah, with the discretion, the three days is the maximum that he would work.
And has he been working prior to this contract? Be presented to us.
So he hasn't been employed here. He has come to the district and met with me and met with, informally, with some staff members, yes.
I think it's just a missed typo at the top. Underneath this contract shall be entered into today's date with the term middle school, reflecting both contracts.
We can tweak that. Great.
Can you say that again, Russ, because I don't see that. I didn't see, I didn't see.
Is that one of the ones that Keith, is that one of the ones that you've sent us with the updated wordage?
Yeah, the titles.
Okay.
The intent is the middle school is where 99% of the work would be, those three days. It's possible, not what we're seeking, but if something were to happen at the middle, or at the elementary level, because he has certification at the elementary, he could go there if we needed to. But, the work is here in this building.
Are you looking at the one that was in the board pack?
The last one we got today.
Today.
I have a copy of it.
The one that you got today?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the one that we received second. The updated, we're, I think the only thing that was updated from the board note to the one that gave us today was, the top was changed on that one, but the content of the contract wasn't changed. And on Ryan's contract, the only thing that was changed, referenced, that was the benefits that he receives that will continue on as principal.
Yeah, and the board pack, it's correct, but for some reason, in this one, it is not correct. The language, yeah. I didn't, I didn't catch that on this one. Good catch. We've got to clarify which one we're- We've got two different contracts.
Well, again, the intent is three, three days a week and the middle school would be where his service would be, but with the flexibility of, if needed, going to the other buildings, if needed. But, if that's not accurately written in there, then we've got to correct that.
Well, even the- Yeah, the language in this contract that we received from Keith, it doesn't look like it's correct. Did you see that, Keith? Yeah. Yeah, the original one that was in the board pack is correct. Right. Yeah, it's a good catch. I mean, we've got to determine which contract we're approving. Because the board pack is different than the most recent one we got, and that one's not correct as far as his title or as interim middle school principal. I don't know, can we change that? Like, do we need to make a motion?
If the intent is primary, it is to be here in this building, we could just not even worry about the other buildings at all and just make it like an assistant principal for this position, for this building only. That would serve the purpose that we're seeking. Or we can-
This contract is interim middle school principal?
Right, not assistant.
Okay.
Right.
So we got some, we got a typo in there that needs to be corrected.
Yeah.
I think the agenda item, if it's passed as the, as written as the agenda item, we can kind of make the corrections to the contract. Because the contract needs to be signed by both Dan and Dave. So, as long as the board is supporting the approval of the, interim district school administrator is written, then we can make the contract reflect that.
Right.
We got those typos.
Do we need to make any motion for that? Like, to make sure that's changed now, or I mean, Daphne?
Yep. Yeah. Yeah.
If you can, just the board asked the interim school to share.
Okay. And then that will reflect in the contract what we voted on as an agenda item. Is that good?
Yeah, good.
Okay. Good catch.
And then the three days a week that he's working, because you said he hasn't been working last week at all, he was here to meet staff.
Correct.
Yep.
Did last week, did he obtain an email address from our facility already prior to the contract?
I believe he does have an email established, yes.
So, that, the back work's already been done on that.
The email address has been given, yes.
And the three days, that'd be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday?
That was-
At your discretion.
Well, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is what we discussed as the main days that he would work. If there was a tweak in those days to represent a different three combination, that would be something we probably won't be doing, but that's a possibility. But Monday, Wednesday, and Friday is our primary days that he would be working. Three days a week, though. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
So, if you didn't need him at Frostic or Meyer on a Thursday, he wouldn't be called in for that?
No, sir. Correct.
And this is like a whole new position?
Yes, it is. Well, it's, it's to provide, that's true. This would be like a new title, new position, but it's really filling the void of a assistant principal position that we don't have.
As a middle school.
Correct.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the interim district school administrator employment contract, moved by Nathan and supported by Dennis. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I have, I have a question.
Oh, oh, sorry. Nope, you're fine.
Sorry. I don't want to, I don't want to muddy this water anymore, but if we're approving the contract, the contract states interim middle school principal, and that's not a problem. Just want to clarify that.
Right. That's not, because the agenda item will change the title as a typo.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Question.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Next is to approve the posting for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction and Human Resources. This is the posting with the title Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Human Resources. Moved by Nate.
Support.
Support by Mike to approve the posting for Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Human Resources. Any questions?
Could we just give an explanation or change title?
Yep.
So, Mr. Noel, the main purpose of the change is that the authority of the position of Assistant Superintendent would, would have some ability when superintendent is absent. Right now, the way the organizational structure sits, that's really not clear. I would think that would be the, one of the main objectives and benefits of making that switch. As we would present also a organizational chart, also, I'd like to share with the board on upcoming board meeting to consider the actual authority of that role to oversee specific positions within the district. So, that would be another benefit that I can forward to at a different point. But in essence, the, really, the position is very similar in what it is with what Ms. Barrier is leaving now, just giving it that, you know, again, that more authority, but also in the absence of the superintendent to, to be in charge of the district.
Any other questions? Okay, so the motion on the floor, moved by Nate and supported by Mike, is to approve posting for Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction and Human Resources. Anything else?
With that, with Dave's contract, which you just approved, his role would be eliminated at the end of this school year in, I understand the assistant superintendent, I think we need somebody to fill your shoes when you take off. His position would be, as district administrator, would be eliminated at the end of this school year.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Correct.
And that would be the new-
Yep.
Kind of like a district administrator.
Yep.
Second.
Very similar. Very similar. Correct.
All right. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is to approve the purchase of the early childhood playground equipment from Great Lakes Recreation Company, utilizing childcare stabilization grant funding for both Pioneer Kids Club at Geiger and Crosslex Kids Club at Meyer in the amount of 210,000 Moved by Mike.
Quick question.
Sure.
Did it say how much the grant was? I mean, I, I saw a breakdown of everything, but did it list on there exactly how much was the grant money?
The grant funding was on a per pupil basis, so it wouldn't have said it in those invoices at all.
Okay.
It's based on our tuition-based kids. You see, you're here, right? How many students was it, do you know? Over 100 students, and the amount was preset before. We were allotted from the state. I don't remember the exact amount off the top of my head either, but the full funding is not going towards the purchase of the playground equipment. But because Geiger had more of a tuition, that's why they're getting a bigger proportion of the-
Right.
-share of funding compared to Myers.
So, the grant funding is larger than what this, or we're just not using all of it?
No, it's larger than that. So, we've allocated other, in other ways to-
So, these amounts, these, you know, 210,000, 98,000, those will be completely covered by the grant, and there will be leftover. Is that what you're saying?
The amounts will be fully covered by the, the grant, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Moved by Mike and support by Dennis to approve the purchase of the early childhood playground equipment from Great Lakes Recreation Company, utilizing the childcare stabilization grant funding for both Pioneer Kids Club at Geiger and Crosslex Kids Club at Meyer in the amount of 210,000 and 98,280 dollars respect, respectively. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is to approve the resolution approving updated and revised Board of Ed bylaws and board policies. Moved by Russ.
Support.
Mike, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. Support by Mike to approve the resolution approving the updated revised Board of Ed bylaws and board policies. Any questions on those? I've got copies of those. Go through. Any discussion, questions? All right. This is a resolution, so we do have to do by roll call. Russ?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joe is absent. Nathan?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion's carried. Last on our agenda is to adjourn.
So moved. Support.